Record has been started.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. It's Wednesday, May 4th for our Design Review Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and start with establishing a quorum. You can all just say aye when I call your name, that would be great. Sam Harding.
Aye.
Jude Kirk.
Aye.
Frank Bishop.
Aye.
Michael Ma.
Aye.
And Dave Blockus, we have a quorum of five, which is awesome, because I guess we've we've had it been short the last couple of times or whatnot. So that's very good. Sean, do we have any comments by anyone that is not part of the agenda?
I One second, sorry. I am not aware of anybody who has public comments, but if there are any members of the public who would like to speak regarding an item not on the agenda, if you'd please raise your hand. If you or if you would like to unmute yourself and provide us your name, which is optional. It does not appear we have any raised hands or any party who wishes to discuss an item not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move the consent calendar. Minutes from last time's Design Review Commission, is there any comment discussion or changes on that? I have a couple of little things, since I was not at the meeting, it makes reference three times to me making closing public comment, open public comment and all that. That was Commissioner Ma, not myself. And that's the only change I have to the agenda. That being said, anyone else have anything? Okay, do I have a motion on the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
Okay.
Should we vote on it? Commissioner Kirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
Commissioner Ma.
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
And then I'm aye, although I wasn't at the last meeting, so that's five. So our first item for consideration is 944 Oura Way. However, I think we have Commissioner Ma. I believe you're recusing yourself because you live within 500 feet of the property?
No, I have to recuse myself because I had a prior relation, business relationship, engagement with the one or the partner of this property, owner of the property.
Okay. So Sean, so just to go forward, so Commissioner Ma is recusing herself for the Oura Way property. I, on item number three on 628 Questa, will be recusing myself because I live within 500 feet of that property. So Sean, what's the mechanism online to have one go off, come back on, because we're not supposed to be on, as I understand it, listening to the conversation? So what would be the process on that?
So what I can do potentially is I can place Commissioner Ma into a waiting room. Do you think that would be appropriate, Mr. Interim Planning Manager Golden? You can put him in a waiting room, which would then separate him from the commission, and then once the item is over, then we can re-add him back into the meeting.
Okay. I don't know if we need to go that far. I think if he just turns off his video and mutes himself, he can just watch, but he's not interacting and can't provide any signals or motions, I think then he'd be out of the meeting, and then he can just enter the meeting when the item is up. So I think that would be enough to satisfy the requirements.
And then how
I don't want to have any technical problems trying to get him back into the meeting at that point, so we can avoid that.
So if he's muted and picture gone, how do we notify him that he's to come back?
He can still listen in, so
Okay.
He'll just get that, you know, when the item's up, he can just rejoin the meeting and turn his video back on and unmute himself.
Okay, so Michael, we'll go ahead and ask you to leave, and then when you come back, you will take over the chair responsibilities, and I will leave. And then after the Questa property is done, I will come back and re do the chair position, and we'll just kind of go from there. Does that make sense?
Yes, sounds good. Chair Blockus, good. So I'll leave right now.
Yeah, and that's similar to if we were at City Hall. The the prior experiences of probably most of the commissioners don't remember this, but we had a room where commissioners would go to, and there was a speaker that was on, and you could still hear the meeting, but you did not interact with members of the commission or the public at that point. And then you would rejoin the meeting after the item was up, so listening in is fine.
All right, so Commissioner Ma, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and sign off and take your picture off, and we'll go ahead and proceed with discussion item number two.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Blockus.
Okay.
I'll right now.
Okay, so we're going to start with discussion item number two, SC 21-0035. The property at 944 Oura Way. Staff, could we have your report on that?
Yes, good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. I'll be presenting this project. I would ask just for the public, if you're not addressing the commission at this time, if you can turn off your video and also mute yourselves, that just makes it a little easier for commissioners to follow along and other members of the public to hear people properly. So thanks. So this project is at 944 Oura Way. And I'm sharing my screen. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So the subject property is located on the south side of Oura Way, which is west of Miramonte Avenue and just north of the La La Corne's neighborhood commercial area. When staff kind of visited this area, we observed that the immediate neighborhood is somewhat a diverse character according to the city's residential design guidelines. There's a lot of lots that front onto Oura Way, but they're really narrow and deep lots. Some are over 180 feet deep. The residences are located towards the front of the properties. But there are a lot of lots in this area, as you can see in this in this map with the parcel line shown there, that there's a lot of lots that are also symmetrically shaped as well. Just as far as the the characteristics of design and architecture of the neighborhood, there are a mixture of single-story and two-story houses, some two-story additions. Some of the residences has retained their original character and aesthetics, where others have gone through extensive modifications, introduced different architectural styles and exterior materials, just like a lot of neighborhoods. This originally were very ranch-style houses, but but there's been changes of this neighborhood. It could be one that's in in sort of sort of changing changing forms, but just based on the overall characteristics, we we gave it a more diverse char- character. Again, according to the design guidelines. Sorry, slides are acting a little bit slow right now. So again, this is a design review application for a new, just over 4,000 square foot house, two-story with about 2,700 square feet on the first story and just over 1,300 square feet on the second story. This slide has a lot of information on there in case we have to go back to it. But I did want to note that there there are also, along with this application, is a 798 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit or ADU in the rear portion of the lot, as the Design Review Commission knows, but just making members of the public aware that the ADUs are not subject to design review, so we are not going to be discussing that tonight. We're going to be focusing on the two-story house. Again, this is the lot is shown on sheet SK1 of the design plans, which is attachment E in the Agenda Report. As noted in the design, sorry, as noted in the Agenda Report, it is a 70-foot wide lot, which is considered a narrow lot under the zoning ordinance. It therefore has reduced setbacks of seven feet for the first story and 14 and a half feet for the second story. On this slide is the various development standards of the lot. And as noted in the middle column is the proposed characteristics in line with with the development standards. I would note that the the second story right side yard setback unfortunately was not transcribed properly onto the Agenda Report. So I just wanted to make sure that the noted correction here of 18.8 feet is the correct setback for that second story right yard setback, which is in compliance with the 14 and a half foot second story side yard setback. And then also, I'll get back to the trees, which is also shown on the table in the right, in the sorry, the left-hand side of the slide, but I'll talk about that a little more in a further slide. Moving on, so this is a two-story residence that has 412 pitched roofs, which have the hip roof form. The massing of the second story is pretty well balanced over the first story. There's the small front-facing gable, which again is pretty well centered on the second story. And that gable element adds articulation and helps break up the massing of the second story wall plane on that front elevation. There is also good articulation along the front elevation of the first story. There's the front entry port, which projects outward and breaks up those wall planes into smaller elements. Again, reducing the overall massing. There is horizontal wood siding, which is accented at the front and side elevations, which again, looking for those design details to break down some of the massing of the building. The overall height of the structure is 24.8 feet, which conforms to the maximum height of 27 feet in the zoning district. As far as the wall plate heights, there is a nine-foot wall plate height at the first story and also at the second story, which is, I think, pretty well balanced in this neighborhood where we have some some houses which are a little bit larger scaled, but then there's a lot of original how original ranch-style houses, which are smaller scaled in this neighborhood. So the the nine over nine with regards to the wall plate heights, I think is a is a good middle ground for a two-story house in this neighborhood. With regards to other materials, the wood, there's wood windows with aluminum cladding. They're going to be wrapped with a precast concrete trim. And then also the stucco siding shown on the elevations on the the front and the rear on the slide. As far as a roofing material, it's going to be concrete tiles and a wood sectional garage door. All these materials, we would consider to be high-quality materials in line with the design guidelines and also consistent with this this neighborhood as well. I just wanted to point out that in the bottom image here, this is the rear elevation, and you can see the second story balcony, which is generally centered in the middle of the structure. The balcony is got a six-foot depth, which is a little bit deeper than the four-foot depth recommended in the Designer V guidelines, but is still keeping it in somewhat of a more passive use of a of a deck with six feet, kind of minimizing the overall use of the deck. It is also with regards to the setback to the rear property line, it's 87.75 feet from the rear setback or from the rear property line, so more than three times a required setback. So it really minimizes the impact to the rear-facing neighbor. And then the closest side is the left side with a 21-foot setback. And there's also, you can kind of make it out on this slide, that there are going to be, there's solid railing along the front, and on the sides, there's the railing goes up to actually a six-foot wall. So it really reduces the the side views to those side properties. So side views are minimized with those walls. You've got at least a 21-foot setback to the left side property line, and then you know, over 87 feet to the rear setback. So in staff's opinion, with regards to privacy in all the design efforts to reduce those things, they they have applied those per the Designer V guidelines. I will show another slide with regards to additional landscaping, which again further reduces those those impacts. The applicant did reach out to neighbors on either side of the property. There was a public notice billboard sign that was posted on the property per our standards, and staff hasn't received any communications from any of the neighbors raising any concerns with with the proposed project or privacy concerns or 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 anything else. Moving on to just wanted to show you one of the side elevations. This is the right side or west elevation. It includes the three smaller windows with four and a half foot window sill heights, which is in line with other projects that the Design Review Commission has seen and recommendations for those taller window sill heights. There is a fourth window here with window sill at two feet, 2.75 feet. However, the designer has proposed to install installed obscured glass up to the four-foot eight-inch height, so it exceeds the four and a half foot by a few inches there. And this window is required for egress because it's into a bedroom, so they 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 can't have a finished sill height of more than 44 inches per the building code. So the obscured glass is just a design technique to help minimize the privacy impacts to the to the side property. I apologize, these slides are moving slow. And then as far as trees on the property, there is a total of 13 trees that have been detailed in an arborist report shown on the table on the left-hand side of the slide of the 13 trees. 12 are protected according to chapter 11.08, which is the tree protection regulations. Five trees are protected because they're in the right-of-way, and seven trees are protected because they are 48 inches or more in circumference. They are proposing to remove seven of those protected trees. There's so out of the seven trees, there's five pittus forum that are in the public right-of-way. So again, any tree in the public right-of-way is considered protected. But the arborist report really describes these trees as kind of overgrown thick hedge that hasn't really been maintained. They have visible decay in the trunks, so the arborists has recommended recommended those for removal. And then two other trees, which include a black walnut and a Douglas fir, which are large trees in the front yard, those are also recommended for removal. And then there's also a number of other smaller trees on the property that weren't assessed by the arborists that are also proposed for removal. The civil plan in the center of the slide, those show with the Xs marked through them, all the trees that are proposed for removal. Again, there's a lot of trees on this property to begin with that are being proposed to be preserved, including several redwoods, coastal live oak, California pepper. But given the fact that they're removing those large trees in the in the front, staff did recommend to the applicant to at least install one replacement tree, and they've incorporated a category-two-sized tree into the plans into the front yard, and staff thinks that's a good a good replacement, given the other large trees on this property and not to overburden with, you know, too many large trees to to make up for the ones that are going to be removed. There is going to be the evergreen landscaping, which is shown on the image on the right-hand side. You can see all those small circles along the the side property lines and along the rear property line where there isn't trees already located. They're installing Carolina cherry laurels, which is a very common species that that designers are planting or recommending for planting Los Altos for landscape screening and to help those direct privacy impacts. So with that, staff is recommending that the Designer V Commission approve the design review subject to the findings and conditions contained in the Agenda Report. That concludes my presentation. There's a lot more information in the Agenda Report. The applicant is here, and I believe he has some some 3D images of your if you want to see those. Again, I can answer any questions you might have.
Very thank you, Steve. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
None.
Jude, Frank?
No.
I had one on the the deck upstairs, but I think you covered that. Thank you.
Jude?
None.
Okay, I I don't have any as well. So why don't we have the applicant make their presentation, if someone, whether the architect or the applicant themselves, if you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll try to kick in. So I'll share my screen first. Sorry, this is a not a computer girl, so make sure I get to the right share screen. Okay, hopefully this, my name is Eric Kane, the architects. My client, Phil and Kelly, they're both online, so they're going to say hello in a later time. So I just jumped to the project itself. Steve did a great job. I really don't have anything else to say, but this 3D rendering, I believe you all can see it, right? That give a much better impression of how this house will look in the surrounding neighborhood. I asked the consultant try to match as much as possible of the landscape design. Due to the lot size, this is a really narrow lot. We can't really put two bedrooms next to each other, either in the front or the back, so the one bedroom needs to be in the middle. And the roof going to that distance really cover most of the second floor portion, so it looks like it's pretty low-profile design. And also, there's no certain name for this type of style. I would call the modern ranch. It's a stucco combined with wood horizontal siding was a little contemporary combination of a material. And the owner have some requirement on the floor plan because they have two girls, then they need to open space on the second floor. So we create that space, put one bedroom on one side into open space with a high high-window clear story, pretty private for them and for the neighbors. Steve also mentioned the backyard. I talked to both neighbors. They don't have any concern, since the ADU also in the way for the rear property. Hardly you can see their house from this distance. So I think that's this that's about it. I don't know if I need to go through the design process of how to come up the first floor, second floor bedroom. There's a there's a concern in this type of house. We tried to make a term in the middle, so the staircase in the middle that will not impose the viewing problem from the from the landing. So there's open space in the middle, and the front door is now viewing directly into the backyard. With currently is a very popular design item is the front porch, and this deck is at the front porch. So can reduce the porch roof, then still maintain certain windows opening into the second floor deck. So I think that's that's it. I'm fully open for any questions. Steve pretty much covered from every aspect of this design. Even my concern, he already mentioned it, so I'm here to open to answer the questions, and also the owner likes to say hello to Commissioners.
Hi, everybody. Hope you're all having a good evening. I'm Kelly. I'm the owner of this house. My husband and I are and our two little girls, actually, they're not little anymore, they're teenagers. Super excited to be building this house. We've been Los Altos residents for the last nine years. We love this, the neighborhood, its character, its proximity to Loyola. And I guess we're just excited to get started and happy to answer any questions you all have. But thank you so much for your consideration and for your support for us being able to build this beautiful home for my growing family.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or the applicant's architect?
None from Harding.
Jude, Frank?
Yeah, I have one, well, one question for Eric.
Yes.
Hi, Eric. You know, the the window in bedroom one up top is really tall. And it's a little heavy, in my opinion. Would you be receptive to shortening that window for a couple of reasons? One, proportionally, I think it's a better look, and two, I think you're going to have a roof conflict with the window sill. It's very tight there for flashing purposes. So do you have any thoughts on shortening that window in terms of raising the sill six inches?
Appreciate your concern. By looking at this 3D, I have the same feeling. It's first of all, it's too big and so close to the roof. Six inches shouldn't affect anything and proportionally actually will make it look better. So thanks for the suggestion. I hope that Kelly doesn't have any objections on that.
You all are the experts, and absolutely aesthetically, I'm happy with the current design, but I don't think modifying it by six inches.
From the privacy of the inside with your daughter, I think higher is probably better, otherwise the
Yes, certainly, but we'll we'll have window coverings, so that we can adequately address the
Okay, well, can I just say on it, that was my main concern for privacy for the individual inside the room.
Right.
Secondly, in bedroom two, I'm looking at the window in relationship to the neighbors, and that window overlooks the red tile roof of the adjacent neighbors. And given that you're preserving the tree stand in the rear yard, would you be receptive to raising the sill on that one? Additional six inches, one, it helps with the, once again, the roof issue. But two, I think if in my world, if you'd raised it slightly and got rid of the obscure glass, which is always a half, excuse me, excuse my language, half-baked solution to privacy. Do you think that there would be any privacy impacts on the neighbors to the right? Eric?
I I don't, I'm fully support. I don't think that's a fair exchange, but we usually like to make this suggestion, but never get approved. But since you suggest that, of course, by raising the sill and get it all clear glass is much better situation for the bedroom inside.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, I just said one question to the applicant or the architect. Can you walk me through your community outreach? To me, it looks a little weak. You just contacted the one on each side. And maybe you can, I'm missing something.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is originally because this Oh, okay. Yeah, this is originally because this project was delayed a month. Originally, I just contact the adjacent neighbors. And after that meeting, talking to Steve, I say, he recommend. Because you're concerned more neighbors needs to be in law involved. Actually, I sent out the mail with the plans to the all surrounding neighbors across street. And the three neighbors in the back is a little smaller lot, so they cover this lock cover three. Properties in the back. I mailed it to them. So far, I haven't received any feedback because I think in this pandemic. Is better not for me to knock the door, try to contact them, except for the adjacent neighbors. They're okay. In the cross street, the three neighbors, I when I put up the sign, I actually talk. One of the neighbor and indicate that the mail will come in the next day. But they never actually contacted me to even ask questions or set up a meeting. So I assume they're okay with this design. Those mail was the regular mail, not the certified mail, so I don't have receipt for it.
And when did you do the mailing?
That's right after the first meeting. I mean, the April 6.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And just to just to make clear, this project was submitted prior to the city. Revising our supplemental requirements, so newer projects would be required to do a more formal. Neighborhood communication, but this one, it was just at a time when staff was urging. Applicants to do it, but there was no requirement at that time. So I just wanted to make that clear. I think I had some conversations with Eric about it, but I didn't get any formal, some of the formal documents. That he is suggesting as far as sending mailers out, so it none of that was incorporated into the gender report.
Great. Thanks for clarification, Steve. Any other questions, commissioners? I think we've covered it. So why don't we go ahead? Steve, do we have any public comment on this item?
Since Sean is kind of managing the meeting, has those controls of and Eric, if you can stop sharing your screen or we can.
Oh, sure.
Have a better.
Um, I have not received any notice of anybody who would like to speak on the item, but if any member of the public would like to speak regarding this particular item, please raise your hand. There. There are no hands raised.
And I'd also just suggest if you can't find that that button, if you want to unmute yourself and speak at this time, you can also just do that.
Yes. If you'd like to speak regarding this item, please unmute yourself and please provide your name, which is an option only. There are no parties that have muted themselves. And there is no one requesting under chat.
Which should be. Thank you. Well, let's go ahead to commissioner discussion. Who would like to begin? Sam?
Well, it I like the project and I think the the intent of the. Architect to make contact and talk freely with the neighbors is important. So I'm in favor of the project.
Jude? Similar similar thoughts. One, I I would like to see the window sills raised in bedroom one and two. And with the addition of the deletion of the obscure glass, I don't think, I think having a. One, having a true window there is a better environment for the habitants inhabitants and two, I given. My understanding, the window location, there's going to be zero privacy impacts on the adjacent neighbor. So I think. Even though it doesn't meet exactly the design guidelines, I think the intent there is to preserve the privacy of the neighbors. And for the balcony and back, it's reasonable. It's very passive. Given the distance to the rear neighbors, I think, once again, they've even raised the sidewall heights. So if there's any. Noise or light leakage to the neighbors on either side, I think that's been already addressed. So. All in all, I think it's a, you know, a very nice solution. It works well with the neighborhood. And in line very much with the design guidelines. So I'm in favor of the project.
So Jude, do you want those two items regarding the windows as conditions of approval or just suggestions?
Well, I. I would condition it. One, I think architecturally, it'll be a little bit more better proportion on the front elevation. Won't be top heavy. And once again, the daughter's privacy in the front bedroom is a concern. So. And then the other one, I think we need to override what's on the drawing. So. To me, that should be a condition as well, if and when we move to approve the project.
Okay. Thank you. Frank, any comments?
Just on the on the deck, I'll echo what Jude said there. You know, normally we we go for four feet instead of six. The particular construction of the. Of the walls around the deck. And I think it it stops noise and sightlines from the side yards. And then the the distance of 85 feet to the rear property line. I think once I saw that, I think I think it will be fine, but I just remind all of us that we've been. We have been, you know.
Four feet.
On the four foot mark, not the six foot mark. Other than that, I I think it's a good looking house. Actually, it fits a lot well. And I think it's a fine addition to the to the neighborhood. So I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, I echo similar comments, so I don't need to go through it.
David, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
And. Having both nine foot on both levels, I think is appropriate in this design because the roof lines really mitigate the impact of the taller. Plate height on the second story. I know there's been projects recently where we pushed for lower plate heights. On the second story, but I think this is the exception to that. And I don't want to say use this as precedent for anything, but. Just going on record that I'm okay with the nine and nine in this instance.
Sounds like you're getting soft, Jude.
I am.
I would I would echo the same sentiment. So do we have?
Just one one thought before you come to a motion here. I heard Commissioner Carrick talk about bedroom two. Raising the the window sill. I just want to make and I I'm sure Jude is aware of this, but. That window is is it egress? So just be careful with how high it's raised, so it still can meet that egress requirement.
I am aware of that issue and I I assume Eric, the architect. Will tell me that raising that window sill six inches will not affect a building code requirement, correct?
I'm checking right now, so I'm pretty sure that window probably is a two foot eight from the floor. So I'll check. Even though three feet and 42 inches still barely make it. I'm checking right now.
Yeah, I think I I think I measured like two seven.
Yeah, so you're well under the 44 inches per code. Once again, I'd rather have a clear glass window to raise it to whatever height that still meets egress requirements. But clears the roof line.
Currently is two eight, so make it three forty inches, no problem. Three foot two, okay, 38 inches.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll I move that we approve SC 21-0035, the new home at 944 ROA. Per the findings and conditions as listed in the staff report with the two additional conditions to. One, raise the sill height in and of the window in bedroom number one, six inches. And two, raise the bedroom sill in bedroom number two, six inches or so. As long as it's code compliance and remove the obscure glass component as shown in the drawings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So move. Let's go ahead and vote. Sam?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
And David, I as well. So it passes four to zero. Congratulations. Your project has been approved.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Yeah.
So.
Good night.
Good night, all. Commissioner Ma? If you hear us and want to come back in.
Back.
Okay, vice chair Ma, I'm going to go ahead and and sign off and you can go ahead and take item number three.
And when you are done, then signal me back on.
All right, thank you, Chair Blackett. All right, let's continue with the item number three. That's SC 21-0046 at the 228 West Star Drive. Let's have. Project manager Ja do the presentation. Go ahead, Ja.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. This is Ja Mio, associate planner. Tonight, I would like to bring back this two-story addition project on 628 Quester Drive that was continued from March 2, DRC meeting. From the March 2 Design Review Commission meeting, commissioners provided six comments and directions to ask the applicant to revise and incorporate. The directions are number one, provide documentation of conversations with neighbors showing that they have reviewed the plans. Their concerns about privacy impacts have been addressed and are in agreement with the proposed design. Number two, there are discrepancies found between the depicted existing elevations and the actual building elevations in the previous plan set. Applicant shall revise existing elevation plans to reflect the actual conditions. Also, a better materials board is required to be provided to present the exterior materials upgrade. Next one is that the applicant shall review section. 5.4 of the residential design guidelines and use appropriate design mitigations. To to reduce the perception of the block and messing. Number five is that the applicant shall reconsider the rear facing window to reduce the visual impact as well as light impact to the rear neighbors. The last direction is that the applicant should provide a full landscaping plan. So from this slide, I will go over what revisions and updates have been done by the applicant responding to the commissioners directions. On this slide, the applicant communicated with, this slide shows that the applicant had communicated with the adjacent neighbors and obtained the emails and letter from the neighbors. That showing shows the neighbor, their first concern have been addressed. Commissioners can find the detailed correspondences in the attachment E of the staff report. Additionally, staff also sent an email reaching out to the surrounding neighbors and staff has not heard any concerns from. The neighbors for this updated project so far. For the front elevation, the applicant has also redrawn the existing front elevation to reflect his actual conditions. As a reminder and also for the information, commissioners who was absent from the last meeting. The existing two-story element has an approved variance to allow five-foot reduction of the required side second story setback at that time. And this is a new materials board is provided by the applicant to lay out all the detailed materials. And commissioners can find the materials board on sheet A dash six in the plan set. And this elevation, this updated elevation is provided by the applicant to address the messing. Concerns from the commissioners, the following mitigation measures have been provided. Number one, the applicant apply distinct exterior materials, including horizontal siding at the first floor with stone veneer with coating at the garage. And then at the second floor, the applicant applied the vertical siding. Also, the applicant added architectural roof projection between the first story and existing second story to soften the messing that it was. Soften the messing. And then the applicant also added a projected porch to the existing entrance to provide more articulation. There are some other minor design mitigations such as the garage door has been centered and made the existing two-story element more symmetric. The the renderings from the from the garage side and also the main entrance side to provide some visualization. For the rear facing bedroom window, the applicant has changed the original designed six foot wide and a five foot tall. Bedroom window with two foot and six inch sill height to a five foot wide and four foot tall with three foot and six inch sill height. To to address the privacy concern. And this is the updated landscaping plan. All existing trees and the screening vegetation will be retained on site. So with this all the modifications that the applicant has incorporated. Staff now recommends the design review commission approve this application subject to the listed findings. Steph now concludes the presentation and I believe the the owner also prepared a presentation that we'd like to give commissioners. And Steph, open for questions and comments. Thank you.
All right, any question from commissioner for the staff? None.
No. Frank?
I just make an observation. This is so much better than the first go around.
Agree.
No questions.
All right, thank you. If that's the case, is the the architect or the owner would like to. To to make a presentation or say anything?
Hi, I'm Ying. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I want to give a quick presentation.
Sure, go ahead.
So. So I think Ja already covered the most part of this and I want to mainly focus on the neighbors outreach. For for this project. So we started this project in last December, last November, and. We have first neighbor reach out mail sent out on early December. And at that time, we we have in our first design, there is a. Second floor deck outside of the master bedroom addition. So the neighbor have raised the privacy concerns. About the balcony and in December, we revisited the plan to completely remove the balcony. And at that moment, the neighbors are satisfied with our new design. And during the, but however. Before the DRC meeting, due to miscommunication between me and our neighbors, they are looking at the wrong. Plan set. So they thought we still have the balcony added when we submitted to DRC for review. At that time, they showed up in the DRC meeting and raised the privacy concerns. After last meeting, we discussed with neighbors regarding the privacy concerns again, and we reached the agreement with them. And I will show some conversation between us in in later slides. And this is. Existing and proposed design, so you have a better. Feel about how our design looks like. And this is the rear view of our design. So we are pre-thought most of the landscaping and the trees. And this is a front view. So you can notice there are eight redwoods in front of our house, which are most almost covered the whole, the entire house from the street. And this is a rear view. We have four Japanese chesswood, which is our green type and on the rear neighbor. And this is a rear view. We have four Japanese chestwood, which is our green type, and on the rear neighbor line. And this provide a very good privacy between me and neighbor on our rear side. So for the neighbors' responses, we got the supporter letter from neighbor on our east side. And for the rear east side, we discussed about the tree coverage because in this place, there is a, there is a Japanese maple, which is not, which is not our green tree. But the owner of this property really likes the maple tree. So we discussed to have a new tree planted in their yard to provide additional coverage. And upon the construction time, they will find the best location to plant the new tree. So this is our solution for, for the privacy issues on this side. And on the backside, the owner is satisfied with our latest plan. On the right side, the owner do not intend to attend the DRC meeting, and based on the latest supply, they are satisfied with our plan. And also, they have a new ADU. It's currently under construction on this corner, which blocked almost the entire view from our property. And I highlighted the evergreen trees on our backyard in this slide. So next slide, this is ADU I mentioned before. And there is also an Australian pine at this location, and we expect it will grow into a huge tree, which provide additional privacy coverage. And this is the image we discussed with neighbor on our backside. And on the left top corner, this is a photo provided by the owner. And we did this, we modeled in SketchUp, and this is how it looks like after the second story added. So you can see the window of our master bedroom is completely covered by existing trees. And there is a cherry lower on this corner, and it will eventually fill the gap between our property to provide additional coverage. And this one is the photo I shared with neighbor on 647 Ablada Drive. And the Japanese maple, even though it's not our green tree, but it's very big and the branches already provide a really good coverage between us. So the next one is rendering of our proposed frontal view. You can see our second story addition is completely covered by the redwood trees. And there is another, the view from another angle. Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks for Commissioners to feedback during last DRC meeting, and we resolved most of them. And we are looking for approval of this project.
All right, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Do we have any question from Commissioner for the owner? Okay. All right.
Yeah, that was very good, that last presentation with the different angles and the tree maturity. I thought that was very helpful.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Harding. Frank, any question?
I'm good. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, so if we don't have any question from Commissioner, let's check, see if we have any, anyone from the public would like to speak on this project.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding this item? If so, please raise your hand. If you're not able to raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide your name, which is an option. There are no parties that have raised their hand or unmuted themselves.
All right, thank you, Sean. So if that's the case, let's close for the public section, and let's move on to Commissioners' discussion. Who would like to go first? I see Sam. You're the first one on my screen.
Yeah, well, I like, again, I like the changes that were made. I felt like they were very helpful in approving or being in favor of this project, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harding. Jude?
Sure. Once again, I think this was a worthy pause to the project to circle back and look at some opportunities. Thank you, Yun, Yun Li, Yun, for doing that. I think it's a better project that's come forward. I think it's addressed the neighbors' concerns about privacy, and you've gone over the top in addressing what we've asked for. So once again, I commend you for what you've done, and then I hope you enjoy the house for many years to come as it's well, well done at this point, and the package was very complete. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerrick. Also, Frank, Commissioner Bishop?
Yeah, thanks, Michael. So I'll echo Jude. I think the privacy concerns are fixed well in the, in the back. I think the neighbors will be happy with the, with the changes as well as the owners. But, but for me, the front facade is just such an improvement over the first design. Garage door centered, we've got a break in the, the massing of the wall over the garage, the porch over the front door. It's, it's a beautiful home. Huge change is what I would say from the first set of plans that we saw, and I'm in favor of the project at this point.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bishop. Yeah, same here. I agree generally with the other Commissioner. It's a significant improvement from last time. You know, the designer and the owner go way beyond, you know, the effort to, to make a lot of improvements from last time. I have a couple of minor one. I mean, the, just for the owner and the designer can to take into consideration. I noticed on the rendering above the wind scalding stone veneer, there's a white strip. So hopefully that can be something more similar to stone instead of wood, but I assume that's going to be stone. But, you know, I just want to make sure that everything's going to be, you know, very, very nice built. And the second one is the garage door. I know on the rendering, you show pretty simple garage door. But on the A6 material board, you show carriage house style garage door. So for this one, I believe that, I mean, it's, it's not a deal breaker or anything, but something for the owner and the designer to, you know, consider more consistent with the overall house style. But overall, I like the project and everything. It's, it's, it's very good. It's been improved a lot. So yeah, I'm also in, in favor of the project. With that being said, anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve SC 21-0046, 628 Questa, following the terms, the findings and conditions of the project.
A second. Frank would second.
Okay, I'm gonna call each one to vote. I'll start with Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kerrick.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
And myself, aye. The project is approved with a vote 420. Congratulations.
Thanks.
So let's have our chair blockers back.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on. Discussion item number four, SC 21-0043. The property located at 301 Spagnoli Court. Staff, do we have, Ja, do we have a report from you?
I'm sorry, I couldn't find a mute button. Once insurance is bringing, yes, I will have a presentation.
Great, thank you.
So, good evening, Commissioners, Chair and Vice Chair. This is Ja Mio again, Associate Planner. Before you, I'm presenting another design review application, SC 21-0043, for the construction of a two-story residential addition to existing one-story house at 301 Spagnoli Court. The project's goal consists of interior remodeling, exterior modifications, and 936 square foot residential addition at the second floor. Exterior modifications include replace, replacement of wood siding with smooth stucco, window adjustment in alignment with the interior remodeling, and a new 276 square foot open tresters attached to the rear of the house. On this slide, there are two renderings showing the front view and the rear view of the proposed project. This subject property is located on Spagnoli Court, which is a cul-de-sac branching out from Los Autos Avenue between Pine Lane and West Fertola Avenue. There are two other land uses in the vicinity, including a public school, the Santa Rita Elementary School and 700 Los Autos Avenue to the north, which is adjacent to the subject site and a senior living facility to the south. Based on the city's residential design guidelines, the surrounding neighborhood is considered as a consistent character neighborhood. The homes in the immediate neighborhood context are a combination of one-story and two-story homes with a two-story home at 257 Albert Court, which is found designed fitting in the neighborhood. Therefore, staff still consider this neighborhood as a consistent character neighborhood. Residential properties on Spagnoli Court and Los Autos Avenue share similar front setback patterns with low-scale horizontal eelines that appear between eight to nine feet at both first and second story. Most of the garages are attached to existing homes in the front yard facing the street. Simple roof forms with composition shingles and wood shake materials are found in the vicinity. The exterior materials commonly used include stucco and siding with wood window trims. Landscapes in the front consist of mature spruce trees on most of the properties with dense screening shrubs further in. As presented in the previous slide, distinct land uses in the vicinity also feature different architecture and contexts related to their land uses. This slide provides the project site plan to the right and the zoning compliance justification to the left. The second story addition is hashed in gray on the site plan. It should be mentioned that the existing house is a legal non-conforming structure due to the substandard front setback to the garage that is 21.7 feet compared to the required 25 foot front setback. Since the project, the project will not eliminate or replace more than 50% of the floor area, the non-conforming structure can be maintained with the proposed addition and remodeling. This is the proposed first floor plan. The first story will include three bedrooms, three bathrooms, living, kitchen, and dining areas for the family. And this is the upper floor plan. The second story will include two bedrooms, one bathroom, and one family room. On this slide, it provides the proposed front elevation at the bottom compared to the existing front elevation on top. The new front elevation uses design elements that have integrated gable and hip roof forms, application of exterior smooth stucco with horizontal siding accents, and the low-profile second story with hip roof to soften the bark and massing of the new facade appearance. Both first and second floor will have a consistent pitch roof of five inches twelve, the same as the existing roof pitch. With regard to the play heights, the first story will maintain the same play height as eight feet, and the second story will have an eight foot and six inch play height. For the materials, the project's utilizing high-quality materials, including composition shingle roof, smooth stucco with fiber cement siding accents, fiberglass window, and wood entry doors, which are found integrated into the overall architectural design of the residence. Based on all this information, staff considers the project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and meets the residential design guidelines.
Great, thank you. Before I continue, there is a couple of people who have their sound on with children banging in the background. If you could mute yourself, that would be awesome.
I'm sorry, that's my family. One second. I'm sorry.
Sorry to call you out. Okay. Yeah, you can come back on whenever you're, that's cleared up. Commissioners, who have any questions for staff or Ja?
And I have a few slides that haven't been presented yet. I'm sorry for that background noise. Oh, rapid soon. So. So in terms of the privacy concern, this property, as shown on this vicinity map, is backing up to the public school and also have a second street frontage to the Los Autos Avenue. So the real, the real privacy concern will occur at the west side with the adjacent neighbors. So this is the west elevation that shows three windows proposed, and every window will have a minimum sill height of four feet and eight inches. Additionally, along the west property line, there will be screening vegetation planted to replace the existing shrubs.
Hey, Sean, can, I think maybe your screen share got lost. Can you reshare?
Oh, sure. See my shares ring?
Yeah, it's back, thanks.
Okay, so this is the west elevation that I just presented, and four, four foot and eight inches sill height for all the windows along this elevation. This is the rear elevation, and the potential privacy invasion may occur at the projected gable bedroom element that I highlighted on this slide. For the applicant, this bedroom window has been discussed with the adjacent neighbors and now featured with a four foot and eight inch sill height to mitigate privacy impact. The required ingress and ingress windows are placed facing the west elevation, and the rest windows are recessed back from this gable element and should not have adverse impact to the neighbor. And this is the right east elevation that is facing Los Autos Avenue. As I mentioned, there should have no privacy issue since it's a street-fronting elevation. And this is the landscaping plan. So there are six trees greater than four inches in diameter on the property, including two protected trees. And there is so one large tree labeled as T13, which is located within the city right of way. So all the described trees will be protected and retained during the construction. Additionally, for new 24-inch box container suite, the screening vegetation will be planted along the left side property line to reduce potential privacy impact. And this is the materials board as presented. So, uh, with the information presented about, staff recommends the design review commission approve the application SC twenty one dash zero zero forty-three, subject to the listed findings. And I concluded my presentation. Uh, sorry for that noise again.
Thank you, Jai. Again, sorry to call you out on that one, but, commissioners, do we have any questions for Jai on this project?
No question. No questions.
I'm laughing. I have a question.
Jude has a question. Go ahead, Jude.
I have a question. May, I've been doing this way too long. Maybe this is for Steve and Sean. Spagnoli Court, I don't know, can we condition, remove, or changing the name of Spagnoli Court to something else? So, no disrespect to Mr. Spangoli or Spagle. It's just such a funny name. So anyhow, sorry about that. Way too long on this commission.
Frank, any questions?
I'm just laughing. No, no questions.
And, and I don't have any as well. Uh, is applicant, uh, the owner or the architect here?
Yes.
They'd like to make a presentation. You're up.
Yes, sure. So, hi, good evening, everybody. Everybody probably already tired. I think it's, maybe it's good for me and for us. And, and, uh, Gia, our planner represented the house very well, but I still am going to emphasize a few points. Uh, so I designed a house for, for three zero one Spagnoli Court. And for Bindo and Suresh, we remodeling the first floor and adding a second floor. And those are the funding that, uh, Gia, the planner, already said that we complying with all of them. So, here, first of all, uh, the proposed design is complying with, uh, all the zoning restrictions. Sorry. And, as said, the existing house is considered as a non-conforming structure because the setbacks on the floor is less than twenty-five and on the side it's less than ten feet. That's why we keeping fifty percent of the exterior walls and the roof. And the location of the house is in the intersection between Los Altos Avenue and this Spagnoli Court. The only issue that we have here, the potential privacy impact is only on the west because we have the elementary school on the south, east, we have a street, and we have, uh, on the, uh, on the front side, we have the court. So, the first step that we did, it's, um, even centering the mass, the second floor in the middle, you can see in the red line. So, it's, uh, we put it as far as possible from the neighbors. Uh, windows on both sides are high windows. Uh, sill heights are four feet and eight inches. And on top of it, even window on the rear elevations is a high window because it's closer to the neighbors. Uh, the second story house is an L shape. So, views from family room is being blocked by the bedroom that is being located here. And on top of it, we have, uh, four, uh, evergreens, um, trees that going to be planted here to block any view. So, this is the L shape that we can see on the rear elevation and the high window that we have on bedroom number three. And just I would like to mention that, uh, this, uh, design is revision of what we had before. Uh, we had before a balcony and the big windows with a big doors towards the balcony and a regular window on bedroom number three. But, uh, the neighbor on the west side raised a big concern about their privacy, and my clients were willing to eliminate the balcony. Instead of a big doors, we have regular windows. And instead of having a regular, um, window on the bedroom, we have high window and the egress windows on, it's on the side. So, we did all what we can do to respect, uh, the neighbor's, uh, privacy. And I think my client did above and beyond to respect it. And those are the left elevation towards the neighbor on the west. So, all high sill, all high windows, and those are, this is the elevation on the right side. So, all high windows, only the egress windows that are sixty-five away from the streets, so no privacy issue. We also, uh, we also checked, explored if second floor shade impacted the neighbor's ability to utilize solar energy. And as you can see, at seven o'clock in the morning, we have some shade on the neighbor's property. But two hours later, the shade goes to my client's property and then goes towards the east, towards the street, so no impact, no problem in this issue as well. Uh, because we minimizing hardscaping, because we actually keeping the first floor as is. We only changing windows, and the second floor is on top of it. So, we really minimize hardscaping. The only things that we do here is the existing on the bottom, the existing house on the top is the, the new proposal. Uh, is because on the front elevation and the front bed, the front yard, we moving the location of the garage door. So, the driver is also moving from the side, from the left side to the front. And instead of the driver going to be plants and lawn, the same as in the rear elevation, instead of the concrete that we have now, it's going to be a deck. And as Gia mentioned, that this, um, neighborhood is comes, uh, concern, is a consistent character neighborhood. So, our design really fits this design, this character. We have combination of two-story house and one-story. Uh, I have few samples here. We try to fit the mass distribution, the scale, the color scan. And for first floor, we keeping eight plate height. Uh, we using good materials, so really, we fit even the, and the, the roof. We have combination of gable roof and heat roof. So, I think, uh, our design really fit the neighborhood. And the streets cap, we can see on Los Altos Avenue, on the left side is the proposed design, and the right side is the, is the elementary school, so we almost the same height. In Spagnoli Court, on the left side is the neighbor that has only one floor. We have additional, we have the addition second floor, so we obviously higher, but we almost say three feet lower than the maximum allowed here. So, as a summary to what I said, so, uh, we meet all the, the intent of all the six design review findings. Uh, therefore, we will appreciate approval of our proposed design. So, thanks, and thank, thank you for listening. And now my clients, uh, the owner, Bindo, wants to add few words. So, Bindo, you can talk now. Yeah, maybe she has a problem. So, from my side, um, thank you, and, um, you can continue.
Is she coming or no?
Yeah, so I can text her. I see her.
Just unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, so you're able to hear now? Okay. Uh, so, a big thank you to the design review committee for giving us this opportunity. Uh, so I just want to mention that Los Altos is a beautiful city and it's very green neighborhood. Uh, we are really privileged and grateful to be in this neighborhood. So, we, we plan to stay in this house for a long number of years past our retirement. So, that's the main motivation for the remodel, so that it can meet all the functional requirements that we had. Uh, so though initially, we wanted to stick to the ranch-style single-story design, but we couldn't meet all of our requirements that way. So, we had to go with this two-story proposal. So, there are many concerns from our neighbors. So, we have worked the best possible manner in good faith to address all of those concerns. So, that's some point that I want to emphasize. So, we, as, as Martin already mentioned, we, we went ahead and removed the balcony on your side back then completely. We raised the heights of the windows and even resized some of the windows. And, uh, so, and we are also planning to have some evergreen screening trees. So, uh, one thing that they requested was to not have, uh, ever, evergreen trees that have very invasive roots because that may affect the pool structure. So, we have agreed upon to have a type of, a variant of evergreen, which will not be too invasive, uh, for them. And also, I love some light to the pool. So, those were the requests made from their side, from our neighbor's side. So, though, though, because the sweet, right now it has sweet bay. So, but there is a still a concern. So, we, we have made agreement that we can, we can alter the type of tree, uh, so that it won't have invasive root system. Yeah, that's it from my side.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, do we have any questions for the applicant for, from our commissioners?
No question.
Jude or Frank or Michael?
Chair Blockus, uh, I, I have a, I have a couple of question for the designer or architect.
Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so, so regarding the, the material, um, and then the elevation. Uh, first question is the, uh, the fascia. I, I noticed on the material board, you, you, there's a, a picture showing metal fascia, gray metal fascia. And I noticed on the elevation, A three point one, A three point two, the fascia on, on the ground floor, the fascia is shorter on, on the upper floor than some of the bay window, the fascia become, you know, wider. Uh, and can, so I would like to have the designer clarify. First, what's the metal fascia? And second, why the fascia has a different width? Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, so it's going to be the same width eventually. Uh, the first floor has, uh, the, the rafter are two oh four, two by four, and the new addition is the two by ten. So, uh, it looks bigger, but eventually the fascia itself, we going to make bigger, so it will match. So, it's all going to be a new fascia, so it all looks the same.
What about the metal fascia?
I like to have it metal, so it's more clean. When it's wood, it's not always looks good. And so, usually, I am doing like a detail that we have a wood fascia. On top of it, there is a metal fascia. So, it looks more, it's cleaner.
Okay, so, you got, you, you, I'm, I'm just talking about some detail. So, you, of course, you're gonna have some gutter. So, this metal fascia gonna be behind the, the galvanized metal gutter, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just really seen that before. Anyway, okay, thank you. That's what I have.
Frank, Jude, any questions?
No questions.
Frank?
Have to unmute there. Sorry, yeah, sorry. I was muted. No questions, thank you, though.
Okay. I, I don't have any as well. Uh, so, we'll go ahead and close that off. And, uh, Sean, is there any public comment that you're aware of on this property?
Um, I am not aware of any public comment. If a member of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand or please unmute yourself and provide us your name. Providing your name is an option. It's not required. Chair Blockus, I do not see any raised hands and no party has unmuted themselves. So, we do not have any public.
Then we will close public comment and open up for commissioner discussion. Who would like to begin? Michael?
Okay, um, I'll begin. Yeah, uh, other than the few minor, you know, I would say discrepancy or not, something's not clear. Oh, oh, I already asked the question. But overall, I think this addition remodel meets the general criteria of the design guideline. You know, privacy-wise, the, you know, all the windows, um, you know, especially on the upper level, uh, have addressed the, the neighbor's concern. And besides, that the backside is mostly facing the school. Uh, this, uh, school, uh, the parking lot or school's campus. And then now the right side is, is a corner lot. So, the, the privacy concern is actually at the minimal. The design, the second floor addition, I believe, looks like is very proportional. And the massing is also, uh, been, uh, designed well. So, overall, I'm in favor of the, the, the project. Thank you.
And thank you, Michael. Sam?
I, uh, yes, I like it. I'm in favor of the project.
Okay, Frank?
Uh, yeah, I'm off mute here again. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I know the neighborhood well. My children went to Santa Rita. I've walked by that particular end of the street. I don't know how many, how many times in my life. It's a, it's an unusual lot, the way it sits. And I think they actually did a pretty decent job of doing a design for the remodel that functionally will work for the family, uh, and will actually fit in, fit into the corner there. So, I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
Great, thank you. Jude?
Uh, similar comments as Frank's. I think the important thing here is there is a, a bunch of landscape screening on Los Altos Avenue to mitigate any concerns of visual impact from that direction. So, um, very unusual project, um, and, but regardless, I'm in favor for, in favor of it at this point.
Great, thank you. And I as well support the project. That being said, do we have a motion?
Uh, I move, um, to approve item number SC twenty one zero zero four three, at three zero one Spagnoli Court, uh, by accepting all the findings and conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Sam?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And David, I as well. Congratulations. The project passes five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy your new home.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll move right along. We're at discussion item number five. Uh, SB nine, the joint commission subcommittee. And so, um, Sean or Steve, I'm gonna need a little help on this since I missed the prior meeting. What exactly are we trying to do here? Just pick two?
We'll have, um, I think Ja is just going to give a little background to remind the commissioners what, um, is going on with this proposed subcommittee. And then, if you have questions, we can certainly answer those. Because this is a discussion item, you should also up, open it up to public comment. Whether you wanna, I, I would probably recommend the public comment before you then discuss it amongst the commissioners. Just that the public comments might inform, you know, your, your discussion. And so, if you would like staff to give a short presentation, um, Ja can do that for you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ja. Give us a presentation on it.
Sure, uh, commissioners, uh, this is me again. And I promise, this is the last item you will see me tonight. So, uh, this, uh, this item I'm bringing for discussion is the formation of a subcommittee for the SB nine phase two. And some background for information, on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill nine, which took effective already since January first, twenty twenty-two. And responding to the Senate bill on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the council adopted a resolution for objective standards for single-family residential zones. As part of the meeting, council also directed staff to hold at least one study session with the planning commission and design review commission in the first quarter of this year for further evaluation of the adopted standards. With the direction, staff had a joint, held a joint design review and planning commission study session on April sixth. Both commissions voted to establish a joint subcommittee from, um, design review commission and planning commission, subject to the Brown Act, to move forward. And, uh, staff also lit, uh, attacked. And staff also attached the phase two discussion items into the staff report as attachment A. The items come up from four aspects. Number one is the items directed by the council in the December fourteenth council meeting. Number two, it's the unresolved items from the phase one design review commission subcommittee. And next would be the recommended recommended items from staff based on the implementation of the SB nine standard so far. And the last is the comments from provided from the public with the concern for narrow streets and 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 street access, et cetera. And so the recommendation from staff today is to establish a combined subcommittee from the Design Review Commission as voted by the commission at the April sixth joint study session. And we would like to have two commissioners to form this subcommittee. And also staff would accept any additional comments from the Design Review Commissioners if you want to have those topics included in the into the further discussion. Have us conclude concluded this short presentation, and we're happy to address any questions.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question, and I think I'm reading this right from our last meeting. At least I felt there was a different outlook, let's say, from the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission. In our interaction with the Planning Commission, there were several areas that I didn't feel comfortable in accepting. And so I thought initially that was a an option to have separate members, one, two members from the Design Review Commission and whatever it was, maybe two from the Planning Commission. But and I I'm not sure who else felt that. Maybe Jude did that. I felt that we had a difference of opinion on on some of the issues, starting to.
Absolutely. So I just think there's a philosophical difference of what we're we're attempting to do. I'm disappointed to not see any council representation here tonight. Is our council representative here? Staff?
Commissioner Meadows, her council member.
Councilmember Meadows does not appear to be here tonight.
Or that's unfortunate, because I think a lot of us felt very strongly. I think part of what we do, and I've been on this commission once again for nine years. And I'm here to protect the integrity of the neighborhoods of Los Altos. And what I heard at the joint meeting was exactly opposite of that. I heard about increased density, more square footage, more this, more that, above and beyond. So Michael and I spent, you know, a few hours on the front end trying to give guidance to staff and or council. And I am, I personally, I don't want to participate in committee that is associated with another committee so adversely opposed to what we do on a bimonthly or every other week, I don't know what the term is, basis. I mean, I've been doing this for nine years, and I hear protect the neighborhoods, protect the privacy. And on that joint meeting, I heard the exact opposite. So.
If I can address that, these comments hopefully quickly. And then I I would probably direct you if you have any questions for staff because you're getting to some of the discussion and then probably open up for public comment. But with with regards to, I think, this discussion, I there's different objectives, and this is somewhat gets into public policy efforts. And you're definitely hearing from the state that the state wants more housing. And SB nine is another way to get more housing in in these manners. I think the state or the city is has an opportunity to to flex some local efforts in what we think is the right thing to do for our neighborhoods to support the neighborhood designs that have been in place since, you know, at least nineteen ninety one, when the design guidelines were adopted. And I think your efforts, along with the planning commissioners, it can be it can be a collaboration. And there, I think through a subcommittee by members of both of these commissions, you could work collaboratively adopting standards that do both what this commission oversees and addresses privacy issues, but has some allowances for what the intent of SB nine is. And I think it if you had different, if you had separate subcommittees and came to the council with opposing views, it it might be a little bit more complex for them to tease out, well, which which one do we, which standards do we take from one committee and another committee? There might be some opposing views of sorts. So I think there is an opportunity to work collaboratively through dialogue with the different commissioners. And I, since I sit on or attend both of the the commissions, I have appreciation for both aspects. But that's but that's my perspective. So I think there is opportunity for collaboration. I hope it's not more of a tug of war. There might be some standards which there might be some disagreement on. But you could provide alternatives, and it'd be up to the commission to to make a final recommendation that goes back to the council. And if the commissions have somewhat opposing views, then that can be part of your recommendation at the end. But I think that dialogue between the two commissions would be it should be an opportunity to to address the the design concerns and the neighborhood concerns moving forward.
So Steve, I have a question in regards to process on this. Because I'm a little bit confused. I thought reading somewhere it was, well, you can either have two separate or one combined or whatever. I mean, is it a process where you could have, you know, DRC have to figure stuff out and then meet with two from planning to then get sort of the combined at that point, and then it goes to council? Or is it you want two from DRC and two from planning to get together straight out and go from that point on?
So what was what was decided at the April sixth meeting was to form a subcommittee comprised of both design review commissioners and planning commissioners. So you would meet together. I think the result of that subcommittee would come back to the commissions, who would then formalize a recommendation, the full commission would. Each commission would make a recommendation to to counsel. It's a little bit of a prolonged process, but hopefully the commissions would support each other in the final recommended the development standards. But that that's something that will be figured out as we move forward.
And then so what is the timeframe that we're hoping to have this done by?
Well, the original timeframe that the council set some expectations that that there would be a staff would return back to council by May. That was, I think, we're late. That was what, you know, in December, late December, they thought, I don't know, five, six months to return. But there's been other priorities of the department, you know, staff departure. So there's just been a little bit more time has been spent to to gather our thoughts and come back to the commissions. And so as far as what the overall timeframe is going to be, that's sort of yet to be determined with that subcommittee. I think you'll have to decide based on schedules how how many how many meetings you might want to have. But, you know, measured in probably, you know, a couple of months to get back to the commission and then get back to the council to to wrap it up. So, you know, things usually take longer than expected.
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, sort of my history with sort of public meetings and stuff like that, not related to Los Altos, but in other avenues. You have a meeting, you have another meeting, and then you have a meeting to talk about the meeting that you had a meeting about. And you're six months in or nine months down the window, and you haven't really got anything done. Given that we're, you know, one, you know, one or four year appointees, some are getting turned out, some are, you know, we're gonna be adding new people and all that. So is that something that we should take into consideration?
Well, the terms of this commission, there I would have to look at the schedule of who who might be termed up in October. But that would be, you know, as far as sort of term, the the term is on the commissioners might end in, you know, late September. So that would be the the only limiting factor. I mean, this is part of, I think, the public discourse that this commission, you know, you we usually bring items to you, and there are there are items that are either one and done, or they come back to another meeting. And there's less less dialogue about policies and standards that this commission usually addresses. Planning Commission is kind of used to those efforts, City Council, obviously. But so it's it's a little bit different discussion than you've had in the past. But I think but I think it's an important one, because we're also hearing back from the state. They just came out with fact sheets about SB nine, some interpretations of SB nine, which is applicable to your your discussion. And that just was released just prior to the April sixth meeting. So, you know, it's taken the state at least while they had adopted the SB nine. And it was signed in law in October, and it took them six months to come out with a sort of interpretations document. So.
And then the process of the meetings, the joint meetings, when are those or those up to the meeting members?
That'll be up to the meeting members. The the benefit of a subcommittee is you can, it's a little bit more flexible with regards to meeting the Brown Act requirements. We will, they'll be open to the public. We'll be posting the agendas. But they'll be, you know, I think, once the committee is formed, then they can decide on, based on schedules and the speed that they want to meet, they can kind of decide that pathway. Commissioner Mon, Commissioner Kirik was gracefully worked on a subcommittee to develop the original standards and so they can maybe respond to, you know, just it it provides some flexibility and some 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 benefit of that to work in that.
Okay. Fellow commissioners, any questions about, you know, not substance, I guess, but process or whatnot that or discussion? Any questions?
Well, yeah, I have I have lots of questions, but it sounds like it's slowing up. But I do think that Mike and Jude should be the ones going forward. They've already put the work in. They've had particularly Jude has great experience. And I think his voice, even though he is is getting tired of some elements of being on the DRC, his voice is is a very important one.
Well, I appreciate that, Sam, but the honestly, I'm rolling off of this commission in September. Everything that I've worked for, you know, over the last nine years, I feel is being compromised by SB nine. And then to hear my fellow residents of Los Altos on the planning commission saying, no, we want more density, we want more floor area. We want, you know, to increase above and beyond was very disconcerting. So at this point, you know, I've gone to great lengths to, one, hopefully improve the architectural integrity of what we're doing here on a on a every every other week basis. But I don't want to face a battle here for somebody that's not aligned with my view of what Los Altos should be, even though we have to comply with state law. And I feel what Michael and I did back in, what, December, Michael?
November. November.
We gave solid direction how to work within the law and create some guidelines for, you know, staff to administrate or ministerially approve projects that came through on these applications. I don't want to sit in endless meetings with the planning commissioners telling me we need to double the double the floor area and allow more housing. That's not what I'm here for. That's not what I joined the DRC for. So I I recuse myself from consideration of this subcommittee. And I would like council to tell me otherwise.
Jude, how about if we allowed you to rename Spagnoli Court?
Yes, yes. Nobody laugh. People laugh. Come on, Sean, yeah.
Jude, let me let me talk a little bit.
Let me just hold it, Mike. I just say that as a joke, not as a terror at the name of the street. So please, don't be offended. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
So, okay, yeah, sure. Can I talk to you for a few minutes? So I I understand Commissioner Kirk's frustration. I mean, I I was surprised how loose that SB nine can be. But, you know, I just want to share my, you know, two cents with you guys because I've been involved with the SB nine, I mean, actually working on a few SB nine on other cities, adjacent city. I'm gonna say, I'm I want to say, you know, say I love which city, but just adjacent in the area outside of Los Altos. And two different city right now I'm going. And I'm surprised how different they are. One city is so loose that the FBR can be doubled with SB nine. And another city is so tight that, you know, I say, what's the difference between SB nine and the regular process? It's almost the same. We still follow that city, still following the daylight plan and the setback on the second floor, privacy, everything is like this, not much gaining on SB nine. So that's why I want to share with you guys that individual city, Jude, like you, you still have the chance to change the situation or at least express your opinion as a veteran in the DRC. You know, and I feel the same. Los Altos is, you know, we have the culture, the the character here. So we can put that, you know, express that input as a commissioner to help to shake the the new rule under SB nine. That's 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 by two cents.
Okay, yeah, we're getting, I think, a little bit towards discussion. So I'm going to ask if we have any more questions. If not, we'll go ahead and open up to public comment and then close that and then go to discussion amongst ourselves into more substantive issues. So Sean, if you want to see if there is any public comment on this item?
Members of the public, if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You would go to the more button and click raising your hand. If you cannot find that, then please mute yourself or unmute yourself and provide us your name, which is optional, and provide your comment.
And we'll give three minutes if there are any.
Okay, there are no individuals that are unmuting themselves, and no one has raised their hand. So we have no members of the public who wish to speak tonight, it appears.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close public comment and get into the actual discussion on it. I think we're fairly solid on on Commissioner Kirk's comments.
If there's anything Jude, you want to add, you can go ahead by all means. Frank, do you have any comments or discussion in regards to this?
Well, I do actually, and I'm going to take it from a different perspective here. So I think a lot of us moved to Los Altos for all the reasons Jude just outlined with, with passion. I, I'd be on that team with him. Then I listened to Michael and Michael, like Jude probably too, they work in multiple cities and there's different work going on in different cities. Some playing fast and loose, some gonna, you know, try to keep to the policies that they had. In my business, you know, my business software development, right? Is if there's best practices out there, I don't know why we want to spend months of our valuable time trying to come up with another best practice. So rather than write programs completely ourselves, we often borrow from, from others. And I would suggest that Los Altos actually take that tact here. We already meet twice a week, twice a month, sorry. Jude, Jude got me confused there with the weeks. I don't want to see valuable time taken up from some of the, the people on the, on the team if, if it's not necessary. I think there's a better way to actually approach this. I think we're going about it all wrong. So I would say let's, how in the state of California is this being organized that we can understand really what the best practices are for the type of city that we want to be and see if we can't reuse some of those materials rather than try and reinvent them. That's just a, it's a huge waste of time and effort if it already exists. So that's my two cents on it.
Do we know if there's anyone who had, I mean, because this is kind of so new. I don't think there's anyone who, and maybe I'm completely wrong.
Yeah, Michael indicates, Michael indicates there is though, right? There, there are people that are already pushing forward in these areas. So rather than try to define something on our own, or maybe we work with those cities that have similar goals. Interestingly here, the planning commission is tempered in our goals, but, you know, maybe because they work on more commercial type work, that's how they feel. I don't know. But, you know, we all moved here for a reason and we've brought up our families here for a reason. And it, it's a crime if we lose that. And it's a crime if people like Jude can't, don't want to participate because they see this thing being railroaded in another direction. I, I don't think that's right either. So. I don't know. I don't know how you find who's doing what, but Michael seemed to indicate he's working in two different places that have two different extremes. We should try to figure out how, how the cities that have similar cultures and, and goals is, is ours to try to work something together. So none of us have to invent this thing from scratch. That, that would, that would be my two cents in this whole thing. So try to borrow and use other people's material if we, if we can, rather than try to invent it ourselves. That, that's my, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Frank. Chair Buckets, if I may. So I'm not the city attorney, but I'll try to put on that hat for a second. I believe that the objective standards that the city proposes, in part, they need to support the community characteristics and some of those subjective, subjective guidelines that, that we have in the code. This isn't one of those situations where we see a good ordinance and, and we do often borrow, borrow stuff from other cities to adopt standards. But this is not one of those that we can, that we can necessarily do that. The objective design standards, I believe, do need to support the community goals and existing policies and some of the subjective findings that, that you all make. So.
So Steve, isn't that what we did, Michael and I did back in November? Give direction to what we felt was a reasonable subjective standards within the limits of what we could do?
Yeah, and I think that the council recognizes that the timeliness in getting those objective design standards done was a very shortened period of time. And that there might be some opportunities for, for input from staff, the public to further our goals and, and supporting the, the neighborhoods that we want. And those standards don't address everything. Staff were reviewing projects and as we do that, there are certain things that we've recognized in the, in the standards that could be potentially revised to help provide clarity to both us and the designers that are trying to interpret or not trying to apply those, those codes to their projects. Again, because they're ministerial, we need to have very clear standards and, and make sure that they're comprehensive. So there may not be that many things that, that do change, but it's an opportunity for members of this commission to, to make further recommendations.
So Steve, in reading through this document that we have here, it seemed to me there were several or a few things that the planning commission people had indicated that weren't part of our design guidelines. I mean, how well informed is the planning commission on the design guidelines for residential properties? I mean, do, do we have to educate them first or say, okay, here's our design guidelines, read through it, we're going to give you a test at the end. And then we can kind of go from there because it seems like they're more commercial, multi-space buildings, et cetera. Where as a member of DRC, I have no idea what planning commission does or what the requirements are, what the requirements for building a three-story, you know, condo complex in downtown Los Altos.
Right, so, so there are, so SB nine does address different types of development and it, it also allows for urban lot splits. That's something that this commission doesn't necessarily deal with. It's more of a land use consideration.
I thought it was only our one lot.
No, so, so SB nine does allow for, for urban lot splits, which allows up to essentially to create two lots. There, SB nine, there are certain standards that those lots was have to meet. But, so that's why SB nine doesn't just involve one single family house. It allows up to two residential units. And so the perspectives of the, of the, the planning commission with regards to land use, you know, should also be considered. You know, with, with regards to, you know, your questions about the design guidelines and that sort of thing. Again, I think it's an opportunity for collaboration to incorporate your perspectives and, and the goals of this commission and preserve neighborhoods. But they, obviously those commissioners have lived in the city and should be aware of, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the things that are discussed of this commission.
Yeah, and I think I agree with dude that not having our council member here, because Sally was on the design review commission and was on the planning commission. So she's had service on both sides. And so whatever is the next thing to happen, I think we should put a request in to make sure that Sally's in the system with us.
Or extending that, Sam, and I did look and without naming names, I did look at the people, their profile of who they were and what their experience and both that were outspoken on those issues, were new to the planning commission, actually new to Los Altos and without any DRC experience. So I personally would want to see somebody on the planning commission with DRC experience as part of this committee. If not both, because to me that defeats the purpose of what Michael and I have already weighed in on. And I think it would, it, once again, I valued the neighborhood so severely that I wouldn't want to make any recommendations that compromise what we've worked for, for all these years.
You know, Chair, can I say, you know, some additional information? You know, you know, oftentimes, you know, on the opposite side of this story. Okay, so if we ask, you know, people, even the commissioner, I mean, planning commissioner, how many people, how many of you, one of your neighbor built a two-story house with only four feet setback to your rear yard or side yard? I guess most of people say, no way. So I, I think that's the, some of them, they probably did not realize, I mean, back to Jude, that, that might, our experience with the, the last meeting, the joint meeting, I, I think some of them may not realize that, that the real impact. They, 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 because they, they are not as, as sensitive as us or experienced, you know, with all this kind of a residential zoning ordinance or setback, they don't know, or they have not realized the, the actual impact on this SB nine rule, how close they're gonna be, you know, to the, to the residential neighborhood. So, so I, I think that we may need to help them to, to visualize or to understand the, the real impact on some of this rule. It may, it was loosen, loosen up then how much impact to the neighborhood that the, the Los Altos, you know, single family residential neighborhood characters gonna be impacted and, you know, the, the density and everything. They, they just say, oh, we, yeah, we want to increase the housing because of California, the state policy, this and that. But they don't realize that the, once it's implemented, like, you know, this is not the San Jose. I mean, San Jose, they, they may have another type of rule under SB nine, but Los Altos and San Jose are different to begin with. That's what they don't understand. They understand the general direction, but they don't understand the details. That's, that's what I thought. So we have to, we have to educate them. Just like sometime during the DRC, you know, all the de- design review, the, the design guideline that we have to explain to them about, you know, all these rules. That's, that's my take.
Yeah, I, I'm going to go back to, you know, Steve in regards to it being R1 or whatnot. You know, on the little package that we have, agenda item five, is the executive summary of SB nine, single family residential zones only. So how does that differ from R1 zoning? When it's specific example. Says, well, some zones are ready, identify as single family R1, others may not be so obvious. What are the not so obvious parcels or whatnot that would be considered single family zone? And maybe it's the part of the zoning to get clarity on what exactly is a single family? And if that's all R1, then, you know, I would say that probably DRC is the group with a subcommittee within that to determine the objective design guidelines.
I'm trying to understand your question, so.
Well, so, so in our package, under agenda item five, on the back, on page 208, if you got the little subpackage that came with our thing, it talks, it gives a summary of SB nine as of March 2022. And it talks about, so the SB nine fact sheet implemented by Housing and Community Development Division, March 2022. And it talks about single family residential zones. And it really identifies mainly R1. And it says, but other areas or other zones may not be so obvious. So what are?
Are you referring to the, to the HCD fact sheet?
It is. If you look at my little camera here, it's this guy here.
So that's, so that has been put out by, by HCD, by the state. So, you know, typically, single family residential zones and under our code is R1. But it might apply to other zones that allow for a single family house, but are not necessarily zoned R1. I'd have to take.
And what would that be?
I'd have to take a look at our code, but and Sean might be a little bit more familiar, but there might be another zoning district like CN, which allows, which allows a single family house. It doesn't typically exist there. But if, if, if it does allow a single family house, then the SB nine rules do apply. So the fact sheet that they're, they were trying to provide some interpretation of what state law, how it applies. It doesn't, it's not specific to Los Altos at all, but.
Well, no, but I, I'm looking at, you know, Los Altos, most, you're either commercial or, you know, and lot sizes depend or, or residential or multifamily or whatnot. So you have a pretty good definition of what the single family zone is based on R1. The ones that aren't, we don't even know about because we don't understand it to some extent. So why are other divisions within the government of Los Altos trying to, to jump in and, and, you know, sort of designate the building guidelines for single family homes in R1 districts?
Well, it's not that they're jumping in. Counsel asked for feedback from the design review commission and the planning commission. So.
And my question is why the planning commission? If the planning commission doesn't cover ninety-five percent of what it's done?
That, that would be a, that would be a question for counsel, why they would want input from the planning commissioners. But it does, SB nine does have some land use considerations and the planning commission, one of their responsibilities is overall land use issues in the city. As you know, the, the city is working on the housing element and whether or not SB nine is necessarily identified as a, as a way to incentivize more housing in the city as required by the state, it probably will.
Steve, am I correct, SB nine is applicable to multifamily development? So that is part of why planning commission is involved with SB nine because it does permit, it does permit additional housing, correct? Multifamily lots?
I thought it was single family.
Or is it only a single family?
I, I think it applies to single family zones, but in some, in some cities, and again, we would have to look at, at each, at each zoning district within the city. But as a permitted use, if, there are some zones that are, that in some other cities are not zoned R1, but allow for a single family house.
Steve, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I need to interrupt you and I'm not trying to be a pest, but I'm, I'm going back to this document here. So it says, single family residential zones only. The second sentence is parcels located in multifamily residential, commercial, agricultural, mixed-use zones, et cetera, are not subject to SB nine mandates, even if they allow single family residential uses as permitted use.
That's an interesting one.
So that to me, and it says, while some zones are readily identifiable, identifiable as single family residential zones, e.g. R1, single family residential, others may not be so obvious. So I'm wondering, we've outlined everything that's known. We said there's this vague unknown area that we're getting planning commission involved in, which we don't know what it is. And then we have R1, which is what it's supposed to be about, which is really the purview of what DRC does. So, I mean, should we get the bike commission involved on this as well or, and I say that facetiously, if I can pronounce it.
If I may, just for that regulation, I'm trying in here.
Thank you, Jo.
Yeah, I think should be confirmed by the city attorney, but I assume the HCD may want to have this language kind of be generic. Because in some cities, also including our city, there is like PUD area. Maybe some city would not call it as R1 instead of PUD, but it's still allowed for residential, single family residential zones. But I think the city of Los Altos has pretty good R1 zoning district. Even for there are several PUDs in the community, but we still quote out as R1 PUD, if that's right, Sean. So I think in general, in the city, yeah, it should apply to all the R1 zones. So that's my takeaway from it.
Who is going to clarify that?
Sounds like the city attorney.
Yeah, and.
So maybe we should get.
Ja does bring up a good point, that I, I actually came across one area of the city that is, the zoning is PUD, but it, it's clearly like an R one, an R one PUD. But I think we're maybe getting a little bit off the topic. Again, the action items or the, the, what's on the agenda before you is the, the Joint Committee, both commissions made a motion and approval to go back to your respective commissions to, to then, within your own commission, elect your subcommittee members to, to, to join together in one joint commission. And then also, I think at this time, if you have specific things that you'd like that joint commission to, or joint subcommittee to take a look at, this would be an opportunity to provide that. Because as a subcommittee, you wouldn't necessarily be involved or could be involved with that discussion. It would just be those subcommittee members. Again, the idea is that, that the subcommittee, the result of the subcommittee would come back to the commission, who's then making a formal recommendation to the, to the council. So that's really what's before you tonight.
Steve, too, and was, was it not very clear by the Chair of the Planning Commission that, and I think it was in agreement with the DRC, that, that if there is an agreement by the DRC members, that they, that can be a notation or an acknowledgement within the motion, that there is potentially a different perspective regarding the direction from the DRC members? So there's, there's not a requirement that if, if the planning commissioners have a particular recommendation, that it overrules the DRC member's position. They would just need to note that in their motions, and then they would come back to the DRC.
Yeah.
So question.
The, the council is asking for feedback, so you could provide a series of recommendations.
I, I personally am very confused, because once again, Michael and I went through this. I'm happy to sit down, Michael and I, and any other DRC commission members that want to make additional recommendations based on, you know, now time. But I don't, I personally, I see no point in sitting down with the Planning Commission that at, at this point, I think is not qualified to weigh in on DRC-related issues. That, that's my stance. And to me, if I'm going to make a motion right now, I motion that we go back and, and ask the council exactly what are they looking for? Because everything we do, it sounded like the D, or the Planning Commission was, had a different opinion. So let them meet on their own, present their opinion, happy that us collectively meet on our own and, and refine what Michael and already, and I have already put in place. But I don't want to waste hours going, sitting down with somebody that's philosophically not aligned with what I, I view the issue as. So it's getting late, I, to me, it's, you know, it's silly to continue this conversation.
Well, the question I have, Sean and Steve, is they're asking for a recommendation of combined subcommittee. What if we deny that recommendation and don't come up with a, two members for a subcommittee? Are we?
If, if that's. If that's what this commission would like to do at this point, I'm just rephrasing what your vote was at the April sixth commission. There was a majority of the members of this commission present at that meeting that, that, that approved the motion going back to the commission to elect two members. If you do not want to do that, then, then you're will have to rethink how this commission would like to provide feedback back to the, the city council. Again, it was an opportunity for, for the commissions to meet jointly. And that's what, that's what was the conclusion on, on April sixth.
Well, quite honestly, and I felt railroaded at that point. I don't know if that's how the other, who else was there? Michael was there?
Yeah, I was.
I was not.
I was there.
Yeah, and it was just like, oh, you, you guys decide who's on this commission, and it was just like, what? And to me, it wasn't very well laid out, so no fault of anybody here. First of all, Steve, Sean, Ja, you guys do a great job. Thank you for what you do on a bi-monthly, semi-weekly, I don't know what the term is, but anyhow.
Daily for us.
Daily for you guys.
On an hourly basis.
Yeah.
Night and day.
Last, last thing we needed in COVID was the state to throw this curveball in all of what we do, so. But to me, I would like to table the conversation tonight. I would like staff to, to report back to council, if possible, that we're having a very challenging discussion here, and we feel uncomfortable forming a committee which is so philosophically opposed to what the Planning Commission is thinking.
Well, mine is, mine is more, I don't think that, you know, for lack of a better term, the Planning Commission has any, quote, jurisdiction over ninety, ninety-five percent of, of what SB nine covers for any, you know, city or town or whatnot. And maybe I'm completely wrong. You know, it might be good, I mean, we can do a, a couple of different things. We could do, just pick two committee members, and those two committee members go to the meeting and just say, hey, here's the deal. We can't do anything until we get clarity on what's going on and why planning is involved in all of this. From have council member Meadows involved, have the city attorney involved to figure out exactly, you know, what this is, and then go from there. Or, you know, as, as Jude said, just sort of table it and say, hey, we can't form a committee, even though we said we did, although if you only have three out of the five at the meeting, you know, yes, I guess that, that falls within the, the guidelines or whatnot. But it might make sense to, to get all five on, on board on the, the same boat, but that's just my thoughts.
I agree. The vote was to table it until we had all five members back. So they wanted us to appoint two that evening, and we said no, because we didn't have all five and we had concerns. So in my view, it was to continue the discussion, not necessarily form a committee. So regardless of how the motion was made, I think my intent and everybody's intent was to talk about this a little further. And then that was even further swayed by some of the conversation that was had afterwards.
So, Sean or, or, Steve, is it possible to request a one-hour meeting of the DRC with Sally and the city council? And just say, in this process, is it possible to have that kind of a meeting to clarify our position with our rep?
Yes, Steve, I think the basic.
It's not Sally's, it's not Sally's direction. It was the, it was the council's direction. I, I think what you should probably also review is on page three of the Agenda Report, continuing on to page four, is there are a number of items that the council directed some follow-up at their December fourteenth meeting, there were unresolved at the council. And then staff also, and there were unresolved issues from the, from the DRC subcommittee members as well. There has been some items that staff has identified as far as things that could be further addressed. And then furthermore, there are items from members of the public which were provided as, as public comments. So I, there, I think the council wanted that additional feedback from members of this commission and the Planning Commission. There might be some realization of, for, just to be blunt, for people might, I realize that they, that they should or may stay in some of their lanes when it comes to what they're responsible for. But, you know, just like members of the desire, or the Planning Commission might say, well, this, this, the, the commission members from Desiree Commission have never addressed any subdivision, so they shouldn't really comment on subdivision standards either. So I don't know what the discussion will be when you, if and when you guys meet, but I think, I think that, that there are unresolved issues that the council asked for feedback on specifically.
See, Steve, this is where that got confused by people, because the subdivision used to, is required to go to Planning Commission and council, right? But the, the, the essence of SB nine is that they want to skip that part. So it's not considered that a hearing, it's strictly under R one. So I, I think the, the problem is that the, the, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm just a little loud. Is it good to run by the city attorney that this type of SB nine is still, you know, with R one zoning district, and R one is usually typically running through the DRC? So planning, I know that they do, they handle subdivision multifamily. But under the SB nine, this is still considered R one zoning, just like what we've been seeing on the documents. I think that's an interpretation on the jurisdiction, you know, the issues. I think, I think most of us are frustrated, because the, the planning, it's involved with something that they are not familiar with.
Again, I, I can't really interpret what the count, only that with regards to what the council wants out of the commissions. Item number three of the resolution that was adopted on December fourteenth, it just says that staff is directed to hold one or more study sessions with the Planning Commission and with the Desiree Commission to obtain feedback concerning the objective standards from both commissions and from the public. It goes on further, but, you know, that's what they directed. So the council asked both commissions, and that's what we've been kind of tasked with.
Yeah, but they want us to do it together.
That's what our interpretation was. And it felt like there would be opportunity for some collaboration amongst the commission. Like we've discussed, there's different perspectives that can be brought to the table. And rather than having potentially opposing ideas to, there might be some compromises, there might be some recommendations that are alternatives that, that the council would then need to weigh in on. Obviously, the council has the final decision of the matter, so. And it just says to obtain feedback, so it may be different forms of feedback.
What would be the feedback that you, if you were noting our comments, what would be the feedback that you would feed back to the council from our, this specific time that we've been talking?
I guess it's, it's difficult for me. I think you'd have to make some sort of motion with regards to the actual, you know, they point out objective design standards, so.
So, so, Steve, when somebody says, I'm interested in doubling what the city, or the state allows above and beyond SB nine, and we're here on a committee to try to control what is being built within the realm of SB nine, those are two vastly different things. And I see no point in sitting in a room and having a conversation with somebody for hours that, hey, we want to provide double what is allowed under SB nine. To me, that's counterproductive, and at this point in my life, I don't need that. So once again, I have no interest in being on a joint committee, regardless of whether city council has directed you to create a, a joint committee. And I think that, that feeling goes, I'm, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I think there's others on the committee that thinks it's, it's fruitless. We, if we want to tonight make a motion to continue and have council come back to us with specifics within the realm of what we do and see on a, a semi-monthly basis, happy to do that, happy to do that with my fellow commission members here. But I'm not going to sit in on a Zoom like this, which once again, I asked, can we get back in person? And that, that has not been met, when are we going to get back in person?
Commissioner Blockus.
Yes.
Is there potentially a motion? I, I, what I'm hearing somewhat is, I understand Christian Kirk's perspective, but I don't know if we're moving forward or adding any additional input. If you want to continue discussion, or if you wanted to consider or take a motion, they can move this for item four.
Well, I think, you know, I, I, I don't know, we haven't, Frank, do you have any, anything? You've been kind of quiet.
Thanks, Frank.
I've not been listening.
Yeah, no, but I mean, we, we've been all kind of jumping in, I haven't heard your take on this.
So, so, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so my phone, my phone died, I had to dial back in, sorry for that. Yeah, I think what, I'm not sure who read it, but what the direction, what I heard, maybe someone should read it again, what was directed by the council. I don't think the word joint was in there. So maybe we should just go back and look at that in detail. I think a separate meeting is the thing to do, quite honestly. And I don't think the word joint was in their direction, so could we carefully look at that first? And then if it isn't, I would suggest that we just move into a separate meeting rather than deal with people who have a different set of objectives than what we do. And I don't even think what they work on really fits into what, what the question is being asked, but does someone, I don't have the document, did someone read it specifically again?
Yeah, well, it says basically, "Establish a combined subcommittee from DRC and Planning to further evaluate SB nine objective standards as voted by DRC at the April sixth Joint DRC and Planning Commission Study Session Meeting by electing two subcommittee members. Accept additional comments on SB nine development concerns and/or enhancement, enhancements to existing SB nine objective standards." Which, you know, as we get back to, Planning Commission has nothing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, there was something else that was read before that to set up the initial meeting. It didn't say necessarily joint in that. I think maybe we jumped to the conclusion that the meeting that everyone attended had to be joint to start with. Could someone go back and read that?
Yeah, well, it's combined. Yeah, uses the word combined instead of joint.
It doesn't use those words, it says the Planning Commission and the Design Commission. I, I guess I'd like to just again say, you had a meeting on April sixth. There was an action item voted upon this commission separately from the Planning Commission.
Steve, this is, this Frank, could you just hear me out, though? Yeah, I understand all that, but I'm saying maybe you guys got off on the wrong foot, maybe there wasn't a joint meeting required. That's what I'm trying to point back to, and maybe for good reason.
You're, you're, you're right, and that's something that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, so let's not, let's not jump off that point. So I think we had a meeting that we shouldn't have necessarily had, and now we're trying to take actions from a meeting that we shouldn't have had, which makes no sense to me. So I, I think we need to, I think we need to go down our own road here. That was their direction, they didn't say we have to work together.
Commissioner Bishop, if you'd like, I can read the, and if, if interim planning manager is fine, I can read the motion, or the section of the motion that references it from the.
Back from December, right?
Yeah, it's from the Resolution number two twenty-one fifty-seven.
All right, thanks.
And it states, as soon as practicable, staff is directed to hold one or two more study sessions with the planning commission and with the DRC to obtain feedback concerning objective standards for both commissions and from the public. Relying on such feedback and the experience of staff in implementing SB 9, staff is hereby directed to return to the council no later than May 2022 to report on the implementation of SB 9 and to recommend any amendments to the objective standards.
Right, but it, it didn't say we have to meet together. That's not what it says.
So Commissioner, Commissioner French Shop and Bishoff, I'm sorry. So we also had a recommendation in the April 6th joint funding commission and the design review commission.
I, I, I know that. That's, that's, that's not the point I'm trying to make here.
Right. But I, yeah, I just want to explain that we casted a vote from both design review commission and planning commission that there will.
But you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have had that meeting is what I'm saying and, and taken that vote. That was my point. I'm just trying to go back to what we were asked to do by the city council, not what we did when we had a meeting, maybe we shouldn't have had. That's my point. That's, someone asked me to speak up. I'm just trying to share my perspective. You can do with it as you all please.
Yeah, of course. So Steve, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to do like a retroactive vote or a vote to, maybe I'll go, going back to the planning commission, have another joint meeting, I'm sorry, to like.
I, yeah, we're, what we were tasked with tonight and I'm, I'm also just trying to figure out what, what you as a commission tasked us to do on April 6th. And we're trying to come back to you as we, what we were tasked with. So it's also challenging for us not understanding if, if it was what this commission wanted on April 6th. So I think if you are deciding something else, then I would probably recommend that you continue this item for another, another meeting and this can be further discussed. It's, I'm not.
I would really like council or members to be present when that happens as well as the city attorney, because once again, that study session was very, you know, I don't think we, we knew what was exactly going to transpire there. So may, it might be our fault being unfamiliar with correct procedure, but we, I was shocked. And once again, I made a motion not to take a vote that evening due to not all members being present. So I didn't want to form any committee until all five of us were here. And that's what I think I said. So you can go back and reexamine the tape, but once again, I felt very uncomfortable that evening and I was put on the spot as were the other two. And I know what you have in front of you. But to me, I would like to make a motion that we continue this item for further discussion with council membership being present as well as city attorney to discuss whether we, there should be a joint committee and what the specific direction should be from us on SB 9. Because once again, Michael and I have already weighed in on this. Happy to spend additional time with Michael and anybody else on this commission to weigh in on what other items we think is necessary. So that is my motion and, you know, happy to continue the conversation at the next meeting.
Second the motion.
Well, let me ask for, I think procedure wise, don't I need to ask for a motion?
I'm offering a motion.
And I second it.
Stephen and Sean, is that okay?
It's, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's your prerogative. If you'd like to continue the item, you have a, a motion on the floor, a first and a second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a first and a, or motion and a second. I'll go through the people for vote. Sam.
Aye.
Jude.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
And Dave, aye as well. So can we get a re, feed us back the actual motion? So we're including the council, at least council Meadows and the city attorney.
Correct.
And the five of us.
Can we add to that a continuum that if possible to have that meeting precede, like we've done before, precede our meeting? So our next scheduled meeting, scheduled at seven o'clock, could we see if we could have a ring central with those participants at six o'clock?
Is that, is the party of the motion willing to accept that friendly amendment? Is that, is that an amendment that you'd accept?
Checking my calendar. On the 18th? Or as, as soon as.
I would, I would like to further specify at six o'clock to 6:45 to limit the conversation. You know, I think these conversations at the end of the meeting are counterproductive because we're all tired. So six to 6:45 on the 18th of May is good with me.
Okay, I, I support the friendly amendment, I guess is the right term.
So those in support, let's, or let's have, I guess, a vote for the timing to be, or the amendment to be included with the initial motion. So amendment, meeting beginning at six and ending at 6:45 on the 18th, which is the next DRC meeting or the next available DRC meeting that they can meet. I'm assuming, you know, time is of the essence, but.
The chair, if, so there was an original motion and then there was a second and then there was a vote. So you'd potentially need to have another vote on the amendment to the original motion.
Correct, but Sean, my question is should we specify the 18th or the, you know, because we don't know that the other party's availability for said date.
It's, it's probably not a good idea to specify the date because we need to make sure that the city attorney and council liaison is available for the meeting.
Correct.
And we confirm availability with commissioners and then also with the council liaison and the city attorney, so we can make sure it's on a, on the next available date that they're available.
Okay. So Jude, if I can get you to restate your motion including, you know, the time and the next available prior to the next available DRC meeting that all the parties mentioned are available.
Okay, so I'm going to rescind my motion and I think we, we have to take a vote on that?
Correct.
I rescind my mo, previous motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote on that. So Sam.
Aye.
Jude.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
David, aye as well. So the original motion has been rescinded. Jude, you have a new motion?
I have a new motion. I move that we continue this item for further discussion to the next available meeting where city council representation, specifically Sally Meadows or other members of the council as well as the city attorney can join in the conference, conversation to give specific direction as to SB 9 as it relates to the DRC and design guidelines. I would prefer that that meeting be on the May 18th or June 1st or June 15th. And all parties, specifically all members of the DRC as well as council representation are available as well as staff who have knowledge, Ja, Steve and, and Sean.
And the timing?
At six to 6:45 preceding our previously scheduled DRC meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take a vote. Sam.
Aye.
Jude.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
David, aye as well. Motion is passed five to zero. Okay. I gotta find my sheet. Okay. Commissioner reports and or comments.
Well, someone had, Jude, I think that this, do we have from staff, do we have any idea or a projected time when in-person meetings will begin?
The council will be discussing that on their May 10th agenda.
Thank you.
I think these meetings personally are much more productive in person. So encourage the council to have us meet in person, please.
Okay, do we have any future agenda items, Steve or Sean?
We do not currently have a new agenda items at the moment.
Okay, well, it is 9:42 PM. This design review commission meeting is hereby adjourned.
Good night, everybody.